The March 21st Raymore City Council Work Session. This evening, we have one item, the Strategic Plan. So, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, sir. We're still getting our guests seated here.
Here?
Yeah, right here. Unless you need her for moral support, Jonathan. It seemed to be the empty seat at the table. So, you all know Jonathan and Laura from many, many meetings before this, so I'll just go ahead and introduce them and let them get started here.
Very good. Thank you so much. We are really, really excited to be back here tonight with the council. Our goal tonight is to present to you the summary report from the Strategic Planning Initiative. And so, we're going to do a couple of things tonight. We're going to give you kind of an executive summary about where we've been and where we've come to. We'll go over some of the information from the meetings without belaboring that. You all were there, you heard all of that, but a little time has gone by. And then, our primary task tonight is to make some recommendations to you, and those recommendations are about your strategic framework going forward as you approach strategic planning. So, we'll have some recommendations about some strategic focus areas and also some recommendations in terms of some broad goals. What you won't see from us are specific objectives. I mean, those will come in your work with your staff, you know, after this meeting, but our goal tonight is to recommend that strategic framework, strategic focus areas, broad goals, that can serve as that basis for your strategic planning effort going forward and really to seek your buy-in to the framework and those goals going forward. So, that's our goal tonight. We'll start out just by talking a little bit about background. As you'll recall, you've been talking about this strategic planning effort for a while now. If we go back to last spring with some of the work you did with our colleague, Dr. John Nalbandian, and some of the processes that he led you through, some of the stories that you thought of as a team. So, started with that work that led to some council themes. Subsequent to that, the city put out a request for proposal for facilitation services for the citizen engagement portion of this effort. We bid on that and were the successful bidder. And then, as part of that initiative, we've gone through really three phases. Kind of that recruitment phase, planning for those meetings, holding a focus group, identifying the themes for the meetings, the three community conversations, and then tonight, the summary report and conclusions from the work that we've done together.
All right. So, we have brought an updated PowerPoint and the summary report for you, and the first thing I'm going to call your attention to is the original themes that you as a council identified. And this originated with the conversations with John Nalbandian back in August of 2015, and then, when I met with you at the work session in December, we fleshed this out and arrived at some final language here. And so, your themes really set the tone and provided the framework for the discussion for the community as we engage them through the three community conversations. So, it originated with developing identity, the community connections, and we're going to talk about those two themes that you identified first in a significant way because they had an important theme that came throughout the discussions in each of the conversations. And so, we'll speak directly to those two in a specific way. Then, there were safety, natural spaces, good planning, and business community. What we looked to do was to find a way to manage the council themes with the recommendations on the strategic focus areas. And so, Laura's going to talk a little bit about how those align with our ideas for the strategic plan itself.
So, as we looked at some of the input from the community conversations, one of the first considerations we gave was how to frame the strategic plan effort moving forward. And we're recommending that there be four strategic focus areas. And what this chart does is really map those focus areas with the original themes that you've identified. And the focus areas won't sound unfamiliar to you because they very much mirror both how some of the community conversations were framed and also some of the input that came from the community conversations. So, we're recommending a strategic focus area around community, identity, and connections. And that touches, you know, two of the themes that you had earlier identified. We're also recommending a second strategic focus area around safe, well-designed, and beautiful places. And you'll see as well that that touches a number of the original council themes. The third strategic focus area we've identified is around business development and jobs, again touching your themes. And then, the fourth, being around a high-performing organization, some of the internal pieces around the organization. And so, this chart really attempts to map that with some of the original themes that you identified, so you can see that those aren't getting lost in this process by any means.
And to provide a visual of how the council themes merge into the strategic planning framework, this shows here that direct mapping. And so, essentially, we went from six themes to four focus areas and looked for some efficient ways to tell the story of the strategic planning process through that.
And we'll go into that a little bit more detail later in the report, but under each of the strategic focus areas, we've identified five goals, and you'll see those a little bit later. But I did want to take just a minute to just do a little bit of definition. As we talk about strategic focus areas, we're talking about broad themes, you know, broad themes under which you're functioning. When we talk about goals, we're talking about some top priorities. What are some of those top priorities, priority outcomes that you're looking at? And then, when you move to objectives, you're really beginning into things that are more measurable kinds of actions. So, just as an example, you know, you'll see a goal later on that talks about, you know, improve first impressions of Raymore. You don't see a goal that says, you know, make a different sign for Raymore or plant more foliage as you enter Raymore. You'll see a goal that's broader than that, that's about improving first impressions of the community. So, just to give you a frame as we move into this. And again, we'll get back to the goals and go over the recommended goals in just a few minutes.
So, wanted to provide some general data for you on the community conversations themselves. And so, we held the three events, February 1st, 16th, and 29th, and I've got some approximate numbers here of how many people were in attendance. And we had about 135 community members at the February 1st event. That was the biggest of the three. And I approximated about 40 staff and volunteers. I didn't know exactly who was a city employee and who was a volunteer that helped out, but as you recall, there were quite a few people on-site throughout the course of the evening. And then, there were six facilitators for the first event, Laura and I, and then four of our colleagues. For the second event, February 16th, we had about 120 community members, and I've approximated 30 staff and volunteers and five facilitators. And then, for February 29th, we had 96 community members plus approximately 25 staff, volunteers, and five facilitators. And I just want to make a general comment that when we launched this process, our initial estimate was if we could get 100 to 150 for the first event, we would be thrilled. Our expectations beyond that was more like 25 to 30 at the second and third events. And so, you did a fantastic job of bringing out the community, and we were very excited. And we had to retool some things to accommodate that and really appreciate everybody's ability to do that, but we were just absolutely thrilled that you had that kind of a turnout for this. We had 51 people who identified themselves as attending all three of the community conversations, which was great. And I approximated about 215 unique participants who attended at least one of them throughout. We did some data on demographics, and it was slightly more male than female. Those numbers were fairly consistent throughout the three. And then, as you know, we asked clicker questions at the beginning of each of the conversations. And one of the first questions we asked is, how long have you lived in Raymore? And the percentages were very similar for each of the three conversations, but you'll see here that the largest percentage, 36% of attendees have lived in Raymore 11 to 25 years. 30% had lived here for four to 10 years. And then, there was about nearly a quarter of the attendees were less than three years in Raymore, so I thought that was significant as well. And then, we had 13% who were more than 25 years in Raymore. The next question we asked was, how old are you, just to gauge who was here? And we had about equal percentages at each of the three events, a similar breakdown. Approximately 33% or so were 60 and older, slightly higher percent, about 36 to 38, were in their 46 to 59 years, and then about 33% in 30 to 45 years. And then, we had quite a drop-off of those who are in their 20s or younger, which is not uncommon in these kinds of events. It's just harder to engage young people and they maybe feel less of a connection to their city, but these percentages were very similar throughout the events. We did have a slightly higher percentage of people in their 30s and 40s at the first conversation than we did at the second and third. We have a couple of discussion questions that we put forward at the third conversation, and we're going to use this as we begin to talk about our results. And this was a question about Raymore's identity. And I'm going to use this as a way for us to begin to talk about our results from community identity. And so, what we'd like to do is first go through the results from Community Conversations 1 and 2, where we looked at council themes about identity and community connections. And then, I'm going to ask you to look at this data here because it helped inform our thoughts about how does the community see itself and how does that inform our understanding about how we wish to grow or build out and what we wish to pursue.
So, with the community conversation summaries, we really want to talk a bit about what are some of the things that we learned from the community as a result of holding these three conversations. So, in the first area of community, identity, and connections, I think the first thing you'll see is clicker, yeah, sorry. You've seen this image before. This was from the very first meeting, the things that make people proud to call Raymore home, and many of these themes continued throughout the process, whether it was around community, small-town feel, great, safety, I mean, you can see those things. But generally, overall, in asking folks, what do they want to be known for? You know, the themes that resonated over and over again were around safe and friendly, great schools, parks and green space, sense of community, great place to raise a family, small-town feel and charm. So, lots and lots of things about what people wanted the community to be and how they wanted to connect with their community.
So, when we themed the results from Community Conversation 2, we had asked the question, what specifically can Raymore do to more clearly identify itself? And so, you identified identity as your number-one theme as a council, and that came up time and again through different questions. And when we posed this question and then ranked the responses, the number-one thing that came up was to establish a town center downtown and Main Street. And we thought it was interesting that it came up in the context of identity, and we want to expand on that here shortly. The next was create a community center for events and gathering. Next, beautify the town with trees, rebrand Raymore, create a motto, a logo, a vision, et cetera. Have signage coming into town that articulates our image, for example, hanging banners or signs. And then, signs that identify Raymore along I-49 and M-58 to highlight what makes Raymore distinct from other communities. And then, there was a reference to the garden spot, identity. But there were some important themes that began to emerge whenever we asked any questions that got at identity.
We also asked in the first conversation, what does it actually mean to be connected to one another as a community? And again, you know, similar kinds of responses, you know, a whole piece about the importance of neighbors and knowing one's neighbors, people being friendly with one another, but then that same context about a central place and activities to get together, ways or places to cross paths, open communication, and respect across differences were really the common themes that came out of that conversation.
So, on the specific question of what kinds of events, activities, or supports can the city offer to enhance community connections? Create a community center and/or an amphitheater to host events. That was the number-one most referenced thing. Second was host community events such as outdoor movies, concerts in the parks, summer festivals, holiday events as a means of making connections. Have more restaurant options in town, and that was an idea that came forward. Create garden spots or more walking trails. Create activities for children and families. Host athletic-themed events. City support and promote more block parties. Create hangout spots for youth and enhance the website to promote more community events. So, when we had the chance to look then at all of the data related to community connections and identity, as we began to prepare for our third conversation, this is when we thought we need to explore more fully this question that ranked most highly on the identity piece, and that again was the reference to a downtown town center or Main Street. So, we asked a few questions, and I'll point your attention to the-
And really trying to get to the why underneath this. I mean, really, what's the relationship between the community's desire for a downtown town center and the whole issue of identity and connections? And that's really what we were trying to delve into at the third meeting.
So, we asked the question, if you'll recall, in the, with the clickers. This is a discussion question, so it's not something that's necessarily measurable in and of itself, but the results gave us some interesting insights. We asked the question, Raymore is a, and complete the sentence, small-town, suburb in a metro, a bedroom community, all of the above or other. And those obviously aren't distinct choices by themselves, but they do give you some insights into how people begin to think about the community. And 60%, the majority responded, all of the above, that they see Raymore as some blend of small-town, suburb, and bedroom community. And so, as you begin to pull that apart, another question that's an interesting one to help people think more fully about what they want Raymore to be is this question of Raymore should be a full-service city. And there was almost an equal split there. 45% said no, Raymore should not be a full-service city, and 42% said yes, it should be. And then, the remaining 13% answered not sure. So, we have almost equal numbers that are saying, we want everything here in Raymore, as opposed to saying, well, we know we can't have everything in here, or we don't think everything should be here. And I think that's a really important question as you begin to look at what types of projects and as you build out your strategic plan and identify priorities, that there are some differences of opinion within the community as to what are the, what do we aspire to and how do we see ourselves? And that has implications particularly on that question that kept coming up about connections and identity, specific to downtown and a town center. It also has, as you see here, this box, what does this suggest about expectations for jobs? How do we think of ourselves in terms of the types of jobs we go after? Businesses, and then downtown town center. And then, the other question we asked was simply about restaurants. What kinds of restaurants would we like to see? And one of the things that was interesting about the reference to restaurants was that people wanted to see restaurants that had gathering space, so had large meeting spaces where you could have meetings. And so, again, it's getting back to that wantingness to have greater connectivity with one another as a driver in addition to just having new types and new options for places to eat.
So, we tried to delve a little bit deeper into that whole downtown town center question at the third meeting, and really, again, trying to get to the whys. So, we also asked, why is it important to have a downtown or a town center? What do you hope to accomplish by having such a place? And the sorts of answers that came out of that were connectivity and social connections, a gathering place, identity, sense of community. So, again, back to that identity, sense of community is a really, really strong focus in that conversation. There also were some comments about, you know, keeping the dollars in Raymore, you know, keeping the money here, having it be a magnet for the area, bringing more resources into Raymore to strengthen the tax base, those kinds of things. But the most predominant comments were around the connectivity, the gathering place, the identity, the sense of the community. So, we also asked at that meeting, are there other ways to achieve the same effect? And some of the responses we got for that were things like develop what we already have. There were some references to particular locations in Raymore such as municipal circle here, such as redevelopment of Willow Wind, North Cass Parkway. And then, a number of responses just basically stating, a new downtown isn't feasible, or it's too expensive, or it's not practical. So, I think a question for the council to really grapple with going forward in understanding what's underneath that, that real desire for identity, connections, gathering places, are there other ways to achieve those goals besides, you know, having a downtown, having a town center? So, I think it's important to understand the why, what's underneath, what people want as you're thinking about that. So, and that's why we explored that in greater depth at the last meeting because that whole identity issue seems really fundamental going forward as a community.
Okay. So, we included in the report and in the slide deck that you'll have here, the results on the other major focus areas. So, this is the safe, well-designed, and beautiful places theme, and I'll just hit some highlights here, but we asked the question, what do we need to have in place to be safe and feel safe? And so, good lighting, strong police and fire, reference to neighbors knowing each other, so an emphasis on just creating the sense of neighborhood, and that also linked back to earlier concepts about identity and connectedness. Then, we asked, what is important to you when you think of parks, trails, and beautiful places? Again, connectivity came up number-one in that list. Parks and trails connects to one another. There are a number of specific references to aspects of park development that you all will be able to look at as you start to talk about objectives within the strategic plan. Well-maintained public spaces, preserve uncluttered natural spaces, and then several references to more athletic fields and public art.
We also asked, what specifically could we do to make the design of our public spaces, parks, and trails more desirable? And again, just seeing the highlights, I mean, the very first response was having sufficient funding to maintain the parks. Some issues around accessibility, multiple options for recreation in the parks, signage, things like that. And then, what should we pay attention to as we plan for the growth and design of our community? A lot of focus there on providing and maintaining adequate infrastructure, things about being strategic about the types of businesses, managing expansion and growth, thinking about a community of all ages, you know, so a lot of things about, you know, planning in a strategic way as well as maintaining the community identity. The next area, just to touch on before we get to the recommendations, was around business development and jobs. And here, we asked about, what do you envision for a thriving business community that has shops, jobs, and opportunities? And this was really from conversation number-one. Again, some of the things we've already touched on, area with the Main Street feel, attraction of light, industrial, manufacturing, and technology companies, again, the comment about restaurants, some focus on a variety of jobs, family-oriented businesses, and the like.
What specific types of businesses do we expect and need to have in Raymore? And this is one where when you link back to the earlier question about how we see ourselves as a community informs how people responded or saw this. But the first thing that was mentioned was restaurants, sit-down, high-end dinner theater personality, technology companies, light industrial, retail diverse, family-youth entertainment, home stores, Google Fiber, healthcare, and retail clothing. And there were a number of references to both on types of businesses and types of jobs that when you look at the comments section or the feedback, some people said they were interested in having those locate here within Raymore, and others said, we could drive, you know, two miles down the road and it's already there even if it's not within the city limits. And so, I think that's that interesting identity question there of kind of how we navigate ourselves and orient ourselves to the question. But this is a listing of the kinds of jobs, technology industry, white-collar, blue-collar, medical and healthcare service industry, and retail. And within the notes, there were some more specific references within that. Okay. So, this was the comprehensive list. And in Community Conversation 2, as you'll recall, we just asked, what we did was we lumped all of the top results into one ballot, if you will, and then just asked people to respond, what were their top four choices of what they think should be pursued? And number-one was have sufficient funding to maintain our parks and have them in good repair. Number-two was the restaurants. Number-three was establish a town center downtown. And number-four was the technology companies and light industrial. And then, followed right behind was the idea of community activities. And this was kind of a way to capture in the moment a relative emphasis among the top priorities given, and so that's what this slide represents here. Okay. And then, the last strategic focus area that we wanted to focus on was one that you all identified as a council at the December 21st work session. And I believe at the time, we used the language organizational health. And if you recall, we talked about if the city is to be successful at moving forward on any kind of effective planning, it begins with a clear vision from council, but it becomes a reality if you have a high-performing organization or an organization that works well and has the right people on board and does good with the resources available. And so, this area here is really, in the language of organizational health, these are some of the areas that we identified and that we'll put forward in the strategic plan framework that we're offering up as recommendations. But it has to do with deliver high-quality customer service to the public and employees, foster constructive dialogue among council, staff, and community to define priorities and expectations, recruit, develop, and retain skilled employees, ensure fiscal discipline and good stewardship of public resources, and develop and execute implementation and communication plans for the strategic plan itself. And I pulled a quote that came from one of the participant feedback forms, and one of the residents said, when asked, what do you want to communicate to the council and to the staff as a follow-up to this, is accountability to residents on progress, communication on status, and your plan of action and deadlines. And we'll speak to this here shortly, but one of the expectations that was raised is that the community is excited by this process, they're engaged by this process, and they want to make sure that we make progress from this. And that fits in in part to the organizational health as a strategic focus area.
All right. Well, let's delve into the recommendations. This is a summary slide again, and then we will delve into some specifics particularly around recommendation number-one. But the first recommendation is around creating the focus and organizational structure for the strategic plan that integrates the city council, six themes into four strategic focus areas, each with five goals, and we'll talk about each of those in just a second. Our second- Our second recommendation i- is about how you can mark progress on the strategic plan, what some steps look like around that. And then the third recommendation will be around citizen engagement and how you really sort of keep that citizen engagement going forward and leverage really the goodwill that's come from that effort going forward.
So the first recommendation is to establish and focus organizational structure for the strategic plan itself that integrates the city council's six themes into four strategic focus areas and each with, with five goals. The focus areas then, number one would be community, identity and connections. And you all led with that in your original themes, and we think the strategic plan should lead with that as well because it's such a critical piece in this. The second strategic focus area is safe, well-designed and beautiful places. The third strategic focus area is business development and jobs. And the fourth strategic focus area is the high-performing organization.
So now we want to make our recommendations to you for goals under each of those four strategic focus areas. And, and first, for each strategic focus area, we've done a little bit of a description of what that strategic focus area is about. So in the context of community, identity and connections, that residents value the small-town feel of Raymore and generally recognize Raymore as a combination of a small town, a suburb and a bedroom community within a metropolitan region. To that end, residents desire a more recognizable identity for their city as well as greater opportunities to connect with each other to strengthen their sense of community. So, so the goals we identified and the process we went through at the Public Management Center were to sift through all of the data from the community meetings, sift through all, all those detailed recommendations, many of which may show up as objectives, and then to step back and say, what goals might these specific things represent? And so the recommended goals that we have for strategic focus area one are number one, to develop a compelling community identity and brand. Second, the one I used as example earlier, to enhance first impressions of the community. Third, to look at ways to foster opportunities for all citizens to feel valued and connected within the Raymore community. Fourth, to promote and develop signature social and cultural events and attractions. And then the last one, to actively promote opportunities for citizen engagement in city programs and planning efforts. And we think that these goals support that strategic focus area of community, identity and connections and give the council something within which to frame objectives in this area.
So the second strategic focus area is safe, well-designed and beautiful places. And we recognize that Raymore residents value a safe and attractive community, and to preserve that which is important to them, residents desire planning and growth strategies which emphasize safety, beautification of public spaces, a sound infrastructure and a thoughtful evaluation process to ensure these values are preserved. And you articulated that in various ways as council, and it came through loud and clear in the community conversations. So the goals that we are suggesting here is to retain and focus on safety, retain a focus on safety for residents and visitors. Second, maintain attractive and safe parks and natural spaces. There were multiple references in the community conversations to very specific suggestions. And so the goals are written at this level so that you can leverage that input and the staff expertise to begin to build out specific objectives that you can measure against. But there are a lot of really good specific suggestions on that. Develop programs and amenities to meet the diverse needs of the entire community, and that was an emphasis on generational diversity that you identified originally. Provide and maintain cost-effective, reliable and high-quality infrastructure that complements the city's identity. And then lastly, evaluate and plan for cohesive growth and development.
The third strategic focus area we recommend is around business development and jobs. And, and we frame that, this in the context of the fact that residents value the need for a vibrant economy, good jobs and a thriving business community. To that end, residents desire thoughtful strategies to attract, grow and retain businesses and jobs in Raymore, which are consistent with the needs and interests of the community. So, so the broad goals we've identified here are first, to target specific sites for business development and redevelopment. Second, to focus business recruitment strategies on opportunities that align with community priorities. Third, to align job recruitment strategies with both market and community needs. The fourth one is to explore business retention and entrepreneurial support efforts to encourage businesses to locate or remain in Raymore. And then the fifth one is to cultivate a climate for prosperous growth and development. So again, broad goals within which you can frame some very specific objectives going forward.
Okay, the fourth strategic focus area then is the high-performing organizations. Council members, staff and community residents appreciate the need for good performance to achieve the desired strategic goals in an efficient and cost-effective manner. To that end, stakeholders expect from this process thoughtful implementation, routine progress updates and financial discipline to ensure quality customer service and steady progress. So I read these as bullet points before, but the, the goals are the high-quality customer service, the constructive dialogue among council, staff and the community to define priorities and expectations, recruit, develop and retain the skilled employees, ensure fiscal discipline and good stewardship of public resources. And I just want to note that when we asked the question of what else do you want to make sure is addressed after these conversations, probably the most frequently cited was about how are we going to pay for this? And so fiscal discipline and, and just good stewardship of public resources. So we want these things, but as you know, that's the challenge is how do we navigate that? And then it's been our experience developing plans that if you don't build in, and into the plan itself, a goal of how to make progress on the plan, then it can more easily be tabled or we lose sight of what we're trying to work on. And so we literally included that as the fifth goal here is develop and execute implementation and communication plans for the strategic plan. So one of the outcomes from this process will be you engage with staff and leverage staff expertise to build out these objectives. And then when you really, as, as staff looks at implementation pieces, there's, that's when you start getting into the tactical things, and now you're into really fine detail, which is, which is on their side of this, but also this communication plan, and we'll speak to that in another set of recommendations. All right, so the second primary recommendation then, the first being the, the framework for the plan, the second is marking progress on the plan itself. And so the suggestion is to develop an implementation plan with staff. The second is to establish a schedule for a formal review of progress. And so a couple of suggestions in that regard, to keep it present and, and make sure you're marking progress, it's often good to just schedule dates far in advance of when it's going to end up on the council agenda. So, and there's many different ways you can go about that, but it's better to get those scheduled far enough out so that you know that you're working toward that and you can ensure progress. And then develop a communication plan to provide updates. And when we first met with Jim and Meredith about this process and, I think the first time we attended a council meeting, a big question was, well, what will the follow-up be? And if we, if we bring in a lot of community members, they're going to expect things and they're obviously going to want to know how we're making progress. So from the very beginning, before we had anybody in the room, we talked about communication plans. And there are some specific areas, and we cited a couple of things in the report itself related to what the city is already intending to do. And as you recall, at the third community conversation, Mike Eke got up and did a, a few minutes presentation on what the city's planning to do with the Raymore Review, with the website that builds out around the process of reimagine Raymore. And then there were multiple requests from participants to do more with social media or, or essentially acknowledging that that's one of the primary avenues that they rely on for communication. So using Facebook and Twitter. And as, and as an outside observers, Lauren and I talked about this, we were very, very impressed with how well the city did at promoting the community conversations, the branding of reimagine Raymore. It was just, it was a great brand, it looks great. And I think that was a huge driver behind why we had such a great turnout. But I know that this part of the, of our recommendations is already very well in development, and I think that's great because it sets you up for success down the road and it will meet that, that big set of expectations from the community.
Now, the, the third recommendation we make is, is just around the whole context of citizen engagement. I mean, gosh, you know, I, I think far exceeding anyone's expectations, the level of citizen involvement in the community conversations. But that also means you've really opened the door to citizen involvement. So I think the, the approach that the, the city and the council take going forward, to think in really, really strategic ways about what are those specific opportunities for additional citizen input? You know, when might that be merited in the future? When might that fit into plan implementation? You know, what, what does that look like in addition to the communication that's going on with citizens? You know, it's like you have a really, really engaged citizenry right now, and, and how do you leverage that, build that, make the most out of that? And, and sort of not let that just be something where people say. One of the things we heard in the focus group was, gosh, I was part of this process, a process a few years ago, I never knew what happened with it, and then I was never asked to participate again. And that's something we heard in the focus groups. You don't want that to happen with this. You've, you've garnered lots of energy, lots of enthusiasm with your citizens. So, so again, having that just be something that's strategically on your mind, what might those opportunities look like? And then also, one of the things that came up during the conversations was that there was a lack of knowledge about some of the existing opportunities for citizen engagement. What are some of the existing groups that already meet? What are, what are some of the things that you have already established? And finding ways for that education to make that explicit to the public as well. You know, what are the, the ongoing forums that people have in addition to this council meeting? What are the other commissions? What are the other groups that people can engage with? And, and what does that look like? And how do they do that? But, but I think our point here is, is really just, you know, you, you, I think you've engendered a lot of citizen goodwill, and I think it's just really, really important that you continue to build on that and see how you can help that continue to grow going forward.
So two, two questions that we just wanted to put in front of you that, as you, as you consider any number of policy priorities going forward, what can the city do to continue to strengthen a sense of identity throughout Raymore? And the second question is, what role can the city play to help enhance connections throughout the community? So time and again, this wantingness for stronger identity and this wantingness for connections are just so critically important in the community. And so I just want to leave those questions present for you and would encourage you to revisit those as you look at choices down the road or design elements even, things like that, because the community is saying very clearly, we, we want to have that stronger identity and we want to be able to connect with one another. And I think this plan and this process has shown that there's, there's multiple and many ways to accomplish just that. So this is just a, a reference to the communication pieces for both the second and third recommendations of how to use the, the Raymore Review, the, the website itself and the, and the social media. The, one of the, as we segue into the end here, a few things that we wanted to just draw your attention to. We compiled participant feedback from each of the three community conversations, and, we wrote all of this out and, and you'll have, you have copies of this as well, but these were all the comments that people left. And so I grabbed, just for our purposes here, a representative sample from each of the four questions that we posed. But these were the, the sheets that people filled out at their roundtables at the end of the meetings. And so the first question that we asked is, what did you like about this community conversation? And well-organized, easy to participate, a variety of topics. And there were a number of references to that. "I loved the feel of this meeting," someone said. They met their neighbors. And numerous references to the food was great.
Food was great.
And I, I want to applaud the city. I thought that was a, a great touch, and I think it, people really, really appreciated that. And at every single meeting, people commented on the abundance of food and the quality of food and that that really did help set the right tone. And so I appreciate that. Many references to loved the use of technology. So that, that was a, a hit. And the number of citizens that attended, and then this last comment, seeing your thoughts on the screen each night. And that's a reference to the fact that we use the technology that could then put people's ideas right back up on the screen in just a matter of minutes.
But to the question of how can we make it better for the next time, I mean, there were some, you know, things like, things about more seating, some specifics about, you know, how we manage some of the voting, things like that. But I thought what was interesting also was the last one that's referenced, the idea of making input capable without having to attend. There was, there were a number of, of folks that were making suggestions about the ability to have, you know, provided some responses and input and without actually having to attend the meeting, or having a little bit more detail in advance of the meeting, but, but just different options for, for input and participation.
Number three, what would you recommend be discussed at the next event? And we ask this after each event. Figure out and focus on what answers from today are actual possibilities in next 10 years. And I appreciated the real pragmatism that came out of the comments, that there was people commenting on what was or wasn't feasible and really wanting to know what's realistic for our community. The next one, how the city will use this information and implement it. Next, how are ideas paid for? Explain city roles and powers, what can they do, how budgets work, talk about the costs, and then evaluate the budget and prioritize.
Then to the question, is there anything else you'd like to communicate to the city or to the facilitators? You know, one comment that came up a few times was, don't make the same mistakes that with growth that other cities have made, be sustainable. Some additional things about the process. Some, some appreciation and thanks to the city, that the folks do a great job, appreciate the hard work. And then some particular thank yous to the council for the willingness to get the opinions of, of the citizens, so. And thank you with a happy face.
So the final discussion question that we used at Community Conversation Three was this, what are you taking away from this community conversation that makes you excited for the future of the city of Raymore? And we captured a number of, of headlines, and if you recall, we, we posed this at, at two, two different events, but this is just kind of a fun way to capture ideas. But these were some of the suggested headlines as a, as a follow-up to the event. "Raymore Reimagined." "Look What Raymore Is Doing Now." "Community Looking to the Future." "We Have Reimagined Raymore." "Raymore Partners With Its Citizens to Reinvent Imagine." "Raymore Is the City to Watch." "Bright Future Ahead." "Raymore Embracing Its Future." "We're on the Move, Watch Us Grow." "Raymore Has Arrived." "Raymore Attracts More Business Than It Can Handle." "Watch Raymore Develop." "And You Can't Stop Raymore, You Can Only Contain It."
I think that's, that really closes our report, but we, we just wanted to give some thanks and acknowledgement to lots of folks inside and outside of this room, including the council, the city manager, assistant city manager, various staff, as well as others in the community. But it's really been a privilege to us to participate in this process. And we hope we've given you some good recommendations for strategic focus areas and some goals that you can kind of wrap your arms around as you think about the next stage of the strategic planning process.
All right, thank you.
Thanks to both of you. What, what I think we would be looking for from the council is... What, what I think we would be looking for from the council is your approval of the recommendations specifically for the strategic focus areas that have been established, the four of them, and the goals, the five goals that are associated with each. If those are good to the council and you feel like that is a, a good framework, a solid framework to move forward with, what I will be working with, what I will be working on and working with the management team on now is associating the myriad of objectives that came from the communication meetings, the objectives that the council already had that we've heard over the past several months that would be associated with these, the objective from all of the plans that we talk about, the objectives from all of the, the surveys that we have done, there are a lot. We, we've embarked on a number of them. We have the upcoming bond issue, which associates a number of the objectives that we heard at the, the community conversation meetings. So those are the sorts of things that we want to be presenting to the council in a meaningful way, having discussions with the council on how those would fit into the budget, the things we heard here. Can we pay for those? Where's the low-hanging fruit? Where we want to get one- and two-year goals or objectives established for the council to get out there and start hitting these? How do we, how do we address some of the longer-term ones relative to both budget and looking at them from a what was really said type conversation? I think some of our, some, some of our umbrella conversations associated with, but not necessarily addressed here, but that we're going to have to have discussions on, serious discussions on, are what, what was the public really saying when they said, "We want a downtown"? Are they actually talking about a place? Or are they talking about a feeling? Are they talking about an identity for the city? The second possibly painful conversation that we're going to have to have is the branding. There were a lot of comments. I know a number of the council members are interested in that, that branding and identity of the city, so people know where they're going. And that may mean a, a fresh look. And sometimes those conversations are painful. A lot of these appear to be conflicting in some cases. I think they mean people want us to grow. And they see that growth, and with any type of growth like that, people are going to have conflicting opinions on either how to get there or what they want to see at the end. I think we can have it all. I think you all think we can have it all. It's just a question of getting there strategically. But tonight, what we ask for is council approval of the first two layers.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to go ahead and support that we go ahead and move forward with these. I praise the work that was done by our consultants. This was fantastic, but we knew when we started this process, this is a symbiotic relationship between us and staff. Politely put, even if these focus areas and goals are not exact, when the staff goes back and chews on this, they're going to come up with conflict areas. If they have a problem, let them bring it back to us, and then we will adjust accordingly. But at some point, to swim, you got to get wet, so I say we throw them into the pool, get them started. That way then they can come back with their product. So I, I'm not sure how much I even want to comment about any of them. We already have wonderful ones listed. Let's go ahead and get them started, and actually, I'm more interested in seeing their work product.
I agree with what Derek said, adding, again, great big thanks to the staff for all their hard work on this, and of course, the citizens who came. I mean, that's what, that's what made it all work so fabulously. So I think to honor their, this is kind of, not kind of, this really does pull together all of their ideas into what I feel like a very concise plan, and I can't wait to see where staff goes with it.
I'll agree with what's been said. I'll also add that it was clear to me through all the comments and the meetings and, and the report tonight, that we owe it to the community to expedite this, get it to the staff as soon as possible, and get this plan implemented quickly. It was very clear with particularly one comment. A gentleman stood up in the back of the room saying that he had been to many different meetings where we talk real good things, but no results ever come out of it. And that, you know, very true. I've sat through the same meetings in many of the jobs that I've had in the past. I, I guess what I'm saying is, again, that I think we owe it to the community that, you know, we got the enthusiasm up, we got a lot of excitement, and rightfully so. So get it to the staff, have them get it back to us, and we'll go from there.
I'm going to agree with everything except that comment that no, nothing ever comes out of it. Stuff does come out of these meetings, but the issue is, it's seldom communicated in a fashion that reaches a number of people. We've got ways of communicating now, so go ahead.
Thank you. I, I've agreed with everybody. I think, you know, the people have spoken, so they're wanting us to make some moves. That, that person that stood up was in my ward, so, and I think he specifically said my name when he made that comment. So, you know, and this has been just a great information. I mean, this was so worthwhile, and I've gotten such great feedback from the community that we did this. Not everybody was able to attend, but more people know about it and heard about it than actually attended. So I just want to commend staff, the company here that did it, I mean, did, did a fantastic job. It was well put together. I don't know if the food was great, but it was okay. But I, you know, I, I think we need to look at what our goals and objectives are. I know we've got some in place. We need to take this, put them side by side. I think some of them are in common, some of them, maybe we need to change some gears, maybe we need to change some directions. But like Derek said, that, bring it back to us, and let's see if, if that's feasible to do at this, at this state. You don't eat an elephant with one bite, you take little bites. Let's start taking some little bites.
You know, a great deal of these things, these people say they want, we're already doing, so I, I think we're already halfway there. Plus, some of it is going to be up to them when they vote on April 4th.
Thank you, sir. I, I would assume Jonathan and Laura, that that concludes your portion of our process. Is that a correct assumption? I'm going to be a, a little bit, what's the word here? I'm going to suppose a little bit of information. Watched you through the process and was at the folks' meeting with you. I know it was part of your employment with the city to take this process on, but I sensed at least a personal involvement and a sense of great pride in, in your work and a true attachment to our town. You certainly learned about, quite a bit about us as we went through this. I have said, and my colleagues, I'm sure, are tired of hearing it, that we are on, I believe we're on the precipice of a renaissance here in the city, unlike anything seen since the days of the railroad in the mid-1800s and the housing and business boom of the late 1990s and the early 2000s. We will certainly know a lot more come April 5th, I believe, as it is, as Councilmember Stevens has said, as many of those, in fact, almost all of those projects are linked to all the things that you saw. What I would like to do is issue a personal invitation for you all to come back as we build and dedicate some of those projects, in particular, the amphitheater. I have made an egregious error and made a promise to Mrs. Hubach that I would sing the first concert there.
Ah.
And I would love nothing more
All right.
than for you all to be present.
I didn't promise to play for you, though.
Thank you very much for, for your, your wonderful work in this.
We'd be delighted. I mean, it really has been a pleasure, and I mean, I, I think I can speak for both of us. We really do feel a connection to this community.
Absolutely.
We do have available homes.
I am interested in specifics. We've talked about a lot of generalities on that. But they mentioned that parks, the good, good parks and connects and everything. And if you all will remember, several months ago, I told you that we needed to increase our park levy on maintenance, because we've got, we can buy land, but we don't have any way to maintain it. And I'm, if, if you're serious, then let's have something on either the August or the November ballot, having a maintenance increase on our parks. That's the first way, because the people have said they'll support it. Let's see if they will.
It's been a great process, and we owe a, a great deal to KU and Dr. Nowbanian for, in, in a lot of ways, bringing us together. A personal thanks on my part, the, the communication for this was unprecedented in really anything I've ever seen. A, a real thanks to Meredith and the team that she heads up. I think the communication arm of the city is working, and I think that that will serve us well as we go forward with the charge we've received from the citizens with this. I think it will serve us well on a number of the other projects that we are doing. Cool heads prevailed in this when the city manager was panicking quite often. The, and to the rest of staff, you know, you saw the numbers up there where sometimes there were 30 and 40 staff. That wasn't a heavy hand. That was staff interested, just like they are tonight, in this process and being excited about the process. They are excited with you and for you. So I think it's going to be a success moving forward. So thanks to all.
Thank you.
Just a couple of other items on the agenda for you all, just, just some timing issues very quickly. I will be taking my annual personal day this, this Fri-, this Fri-, I'm sorry, my one annual personal day. This Friday for Good Friday, I always take that one off, as you all know. I will not be available that day. I, on Good Friday, I, I take a retreat, so Meredith will be able to get ahold of me if there's any emergencies. She knows how to get ahold of me. The, the second item, which I believe is probably still in place, is the internet is really out here at City Hall. We have telephone usage, but people were actually chipping into rocks today to get letters written. There is just, especially when you're on Google, that makes it even a little bit more of a challenge. So apparently, once again, AT&amp;T has cut through something somewhere where they're trying to find it, and they, they work with Windstream, so everything's down.
If nothing else, Mr. Mayor, I'd move that we move into executive session to discuss litigation matters as authorized by RSMO 610.021 Subsection 1.
Second.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Stevens.
Yes.
Councilmember Kellogg.
Yes.
Councilmember Hubach.
Yes.
Councilmember Delgaud.
Yes.
Councilmember Barber.
Yes.
Councilmember Holman.
Yes.
Councilmember Moorhead.
Yes.
Okay, we'll be moving into executive session. We'll return just to dismiss.